So I'm all for our. First day of January. Five people meeting. Um. That's the goal.
I've seen Alex.
Here.
I've seen this.
Yeah.
I've seen them.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Here. Those who were to be scheduled. Permanent will follow those who were right here or being scheduled. For the same thing as this. The whole meeting, public term or only during. Working. And stuff. And comments will generate it. With the full agenda, yes, those kind of five years that I have agenda. The appropriate time, how much related. Visit. Minutes. Now, I was writing during the times. Uh. The next point in the movement listed on our agenda is it's got the prior session not. Only you sell the physical of this. I'm sorry, service. Is it a bad? Well, take.
This is on.
It should be green.
Yeah, there you go.
See. I think perfect or um. And that's like you can maybe something about uh on the following. If we were all well aware just. Excellent. Uh, we're here to talk about success and prioritizing uh some implementation. Uh, along with that, I want to talk about a code. Really, the overall where it's about zoning subdivision. Thanks. There are a few more. One is a code meeting. Um, which is really important that means that. Organization to be very. Becoming. We believe in. And second thought we thought about is uh. Office. They should install. And access for that. Uh, the code meeting that part of their staff over the last. Forty-five years, we've been following a change. Of changes that we know. Somebody said. Uh, this is up to you. She is, yeah. Uh, these are not extended. Remember the assignment that we did a couple of years ago? We completely reorganized, they were reborn us. But we did it away and. Intent is that they have various of sadness. Uh, this code clean up would ask. To the. Readability, uh, consistency. Things not being weird, it's intense, the so on. Uh, it explains. Because there are really not extended. Significant policies, we just are getting this open. Uh, we don't think that it's means that. For any four probably be outside of their form. Um, sad is ready to escape. Right away. It's starting. As soon as. In addition, the code meeting uh conference then has recommendations, a lot of recommendations, there's no name subdivision code. Uh, little ones downtown, uh, E one business district downtown. Blanco. E two is the woods and then the RTB district uh. Portal and also uh some recommendations. Uh, the conference of plan has a has a vision for downtown. A few things uh straight on conference man strengthen downtown's neighborhood. Increase in residence. This is so there's a vision which is clearly saw. There are a number of uh. Different tools, different strategies. You help us achieve that. Um, if you want to. Sorry. Design. There's a lot of. Village. He's a. For those. And also, um, there's a recommendation that we explore and get another. Uh, which we'll talk about. Uh, things to consider, um, especially with downtown. Uh, the conference of plan really does need. Even built one. You can have a conference of plan and we give restricted guidance says forty-five. F one some areas is. Our conference plan, especially for downtown. Give some some guidance that we also over village wars and zoning mission. We use. Different potential paths to. It's best people that did. Because of that more public engagement. Did. Do significant zoning based downtown. That is the contrast that I mean, you know, where we don't. Uh, but do you want that time uh recommendations, it received. Remember, especially the foundation, that's very important. People are very uh. Have strong feelings about. Sure. It's another uh. Public engagement. Uh, and there's also the complexity of public works building and temple for uh. Temple for lots, uh, it's. The village has been talking about development goals for decades. Uh, there's a lot of different moving pieces with those uh. Works buildings, if you're gonna go down the path of the public works building site. Funny, uh, phone actors. Firmes, firms. Uh, we so need potentially part of the problem now for some single family as a central way. Uh, parking. The place that should this is parking spaces. Uh, that's what I'm saying, this is gonna take a long. Public works doing at the world. They own publicly controlled property down there. Um. It's gonna be a years. So we need to. Get the. And prioritize that. The other. Things. Uh, you do. Talk about the maybe uh maybe the development, uh, this is described differently. Um, a plan, the conference of plan very specifically. Consider adopting and. Um, planning of more, this, this is a, it's a regular. That allows you uh. To have flexibility. In your domain with a goal of uh allowing you. Your development to be uh more aligned with the village, village's vision and those. Or whatever something. Um, so you can have flexibility in things like. Setbacks. If there was a downtown, we give we place for. Setback to funding, etc. Um. With uh the requirement, it's a stretch area. So if you're gonna have community, it's then they can add it, right? Forwardly process. Allows some flexibility on zoning, but the output needs to be. Uh, this could apply on other sites, residential sites, said. Say. Especially the larger. It's not currently available, current. Uh, it's gonna be. For the process. The fire process, I believe, within. Additional public engagement and. Likely be. Systems. Uh, home of what's in Green Bay water, the conference of plan, the the recommendation for this. These areas that. A pretty good vision. See for these two areas. Uh. Wood, uh. Housing, all the commercial space. Uh, the transit oriented down there near. Train station, bus stops, a trail. Um, Green Bay road that is our currently. It's called a multifamily residential zone in this area, but um, as the plan division discussed and a lot of the tale. There were currently many of those. In Arizona, they're preventing or they encourage single family. Old rooms. Which is something that the conference of plan very specifically says that we should. Conference specifically says that we should encourage. Uh, the code really sale and multiple family. Along with the report as opposed to. So then we went to specific recommendations in those areas, but again, uh, since that is a bit. Perfect on this, uh, when we get to the things to accomplish this, there is gonna be. Um, the single family residential districts, this is the the order of the area of the village. R U R C. Uh. Where only we send family residential in some institution. They will, these were the least specific recommendations. This was a all for considering if changes or regulations. We give. There's no specific. Uh, because of that, uh, additional planning is is that before we get into the specific regulatory changes that we want in these areas. And this may be, uh, I would say it's maybe the most. Being listed this way. Uh, because. Whole spread, they truly did. Much more exploration and discussion if we get into. So options for uh code update. Um. There really two, two ways to look at this. Number one would be. Really a full. Zoning code and actually something. Really start from the ground. Um, this would be almost. The significant. Likely a lot of back and forth. Uh, and fairly heavy enough. Uh, the second option we need to have. Is only going up. And. Uh, the code updates really to target the conference of. As opposed to a full roundup, rebuild. Uh, it's in in the staff memo. We're currently recommending. Uh. The conference of plan is not specifically all facilities. Right? Um, the sense that it's only is the output of those. Code can be difficult to have the. Use, the output is not. It does not. We. Um. And so staff recommendations is we're staff led, so you know, it's likely you can take the. Uh, and then begin the process of thinking about. To. Make these regulatory changes to. So the questions for the below form uh tonight, these are all of your. Staff, what are the uh what were the recommendations? Order. Second, the support CDI, please only code rewrite process for should be human. For the days. Uh. To be cleanup project in the group, get those specific. Some recommendations. That is the village of this market being. In a sense, if we determine. It'd be would be. Uh, including potentially the RFP uh with the. To update uh E one, E two. And we're in some districts longer than essentially the greater. Uh, that I intend to split stuff from the. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, to. Uh, my question is. Um, I assume our neighbor. I assume a neighbor gains. Yeah, um, uh. I I think P U D orders as a tool. To say, okay, here's what's in the zoning code, but it's a that's. It's me as an idea for following property doesn't need. Worry, how? How limited? Do they have to be or how expansive could it be? Because I hear this is a tool that we would want sooner rather than later. I don't want to make it curious. That P U D is. Can't see any reason for it.
You say how.
No, the words. I say. Piece of property. Somebody is X Y C, let's say it's a piece of property. And I have an idea for something. This is a bad, that's a bad whatever it is. Or maybe I'm gonna follow the. You know, I want to get parking. Something snatter. Does P U D say essentially, well, wherever you build. Is painful to tell, right? All the things, it's just the player, it's what you build. People do this. Be afraid. Go through whatever new process. This. Is it like that or do there have to be limitation? Built into.
They're typically willing and ask, I think to go back to the earlier session. The conference of plan for all board, we do this, it's it's within that framework. The conference of plan is possible, but it's been more depending and more assumption, especially. So typically that would be. Then it's. I have to go into it. Uh, for instance, it's better definitely the size sort of like. Obviously, why it's. We pass center, we find centers or. We can foxes where we can pass. So whatever it is. Uh, those are all minutes and. That would be worked out in this. That's a big part of. Would like to. Because. That's a little less than we work out. Specifically, yes, if not just give. We have to work. Set the frame. Within that frame, the developer. Village would go to three years.
Because I was thinking that. Long you see it related. Frankly, I was thinking wasn't didn't relate. Always a many things later, as long as it didn't relate to single family. Areas that we can. So the people don't use that as the reason. And then we're limiting this. Well. I'm with that kind of thing. That the sooner we can get that place, the better. Because if. Something in your thing comes along, we would wanna have something in place to be. Assist. Or that. Um, even if uh some of the other aspects of this could obviously take quite a. You know, it doesn't mean we have to. But it would be nice to have it in. If we want. So. That's probably your home here on the. Which is. But hey. Let me say. Your presence. Great presentation. Basically. There is a theory we should. For redo zoning or changing. That's good idea. Very. But. That could be food, which we might make sure to be all equipped and set up the. So to put that aside, we have to be. Uh, you would have a bunch of things that just need to be. Change the English, change the summer, so we get. That. Uh. There are, you know, there are some other things. Out there are certain things. With zoning. They get banned and I, you know, I thought about. Terrorism. And I actually. Uh, dropped the president. Been and then. You know, uh. You did a presentation, there were some tweaks that I was. Some man, but I just. And she goes, yeah, it's great. And now we are. So. Do some things, I think. The zoning. It's favor of that. So, uh, so the. That our preferred practice is. Then, um. Okay, P U D. I'm not sure. What? Exactly, we should be doing. Uh, in, you know, in this mystery. And I'm not sure what we should be doing about. All of work. If we can, if we need to flag another place to put it, but I'm. I'm. I'm gonna see is here. They was. It's a P U P. But if we could avoid having a fear of. About the boundaries. You view. Before we go, if it was taken, who is. I would grab. Subject to learning from our. So I would prefer them flexible. You. So we. Which basically said. Dollars. We're. While you're, we're not agreeing to any. We're not rejecting. And then if someone. If someone proposed. That it's. Okay, I think we're not agreed to, but I would. Do. Okay, I absolutely. Yet. Because then what we said I do. Uh. I don't want to have, I don't want to have necessarily. Loser, but that. Government action is subject to. Okay, my party. And I'm. And a change. Having someone who are alive. That certainly. Don't. Trip at boys. It's harder. It would be nice to do straight forward. That's a serious project, you need to make sure. I don't mind. Rest of the thing trying to. Change also. All all through. But the idea of changing it in English, so that everyone's. Actually, well, Steve was wow, that's. Put that aside, it's maybe well improved. Or we got. My. P U D subject to. So. And I think this is your suggestion was something actually loser. We got. Would just say. Where we're willing to this. But. Well, I don't think. I definitely am sitting here. Following. I. Well, why is for people who have an instinct or comments? And I think you could consider. Creating some kind of a task for. That would look. It's a chip of. Yeah. Back together. Work. We have. Academy because uh. We have an expert. Maybe a. Or maybe a yard or something else. It's a lot of the word, but we have citizens to do. But I don't think I have to fight. You're right. Okay, so that's my spiel. Whether. Jordan.
I have a. Comment in a, yeah, great presentation, appreciate all the work you put into memo and and all, appreciate it. Um, I am also favor of option two here. Which leads to, you know, thumbs up for me for number three, which is about hiring. I do have a quick question, so um, the undergoing the full zoning code rewrite, you mentioned it would have required significant public engagement. Would there be any public it, public engagement with option two with the smaller changes or going through a P U D process? Your development process?
For. Uh, or that.
Okay.
For the targeted updates. I do think that that would like. I would expect that even though. Poor goods and they were. Recommendations. But the details of those. See. Generating significant.
Yeah, so I just wanna maybe. State that I think it would be a good idea to try to get as much public input as possible.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's that too, yeah. Yeah.
When I say no, no.
I meant like.
Absolutely. She said. Yes. I would not expect. Sound it. The. Senior. Public manager. Whereas.
I'll see, I'll see more like a public open house type above and beyond what we would expect for more changes. P U D maybe would have. Okay.
What expect? Get out of head.
Okay.
And have.
Great. Yeah, beyond the record, that's a question. Yeah, thank you. I recommend that. Thank you.
Kind of trying to very. Strange out here. If comprehensive plan, it's overall cloud. Now we want to bring it down to earth. Then we'll have. Funnels. Or. Far clouds coming down on particular items out of our conference plan. And. One of the concerns that I have. As we talk about this. Is we can't do everything at once, so we'll have to have. Some idea of what we need to now, what we can. Later. Um. Certainly things like the plan development work, so really important. Also, the preservation commission has some ideas for zoning. Uh, in residential areas, it's been bugging me about that for almost two years now. Uh, that could be another one. But I don't, I want to make sure that we've got the capacity. To support. This effort. Um, and so we'll have to kind of pick and choose those things that are most important to us, like like P U D. Uh, as we go through this, as we go through this process. Um. The other thing I wanted to ask about. About this is, is there another? More administrative process going on now? For the building code amendments. Uh, we have, um. Several, um. Building code amendments we're looking at. Um, the energy code, the international code council energy code. Um, this California fire stuff has brought to mind. That many communities are also adopting the resiliency code. Talks about how new materials, how you deal with the. Fire, do you wanna have mandatory fire sprinklers in the house? So many new communities are requiring. Do you want to? Have special fireproofing requirements, so those kinds of things. Uh, and so we have have those items. Some of which also, uh, there is a national model, a sort of preservation code as well. Uh, but it only applies to commercial properties. So we have this kind of fully there as well. So, uh, I guess what I'm encouraging us to do is that, uh, yes, we probably do need outside someone help on this. Um, in addition. This is more than planning. Uh, having been through this in old park. Will redoing their ordinance for the first time since nineteen twenty-eight. Um, we had a lot of legal. Since it's not, you know, to be taken lightly. Um, because there is what I call a box that we have to operate within. Uh, and, um. There's the, there's the planning concepts and then there's the legal realities. Uh, that we'll have to have, so whatever team we choose. Need to have some legal support. For that as well, that kind of. Addressing more the third question. The other things. So we'll have to. The different kinds of things, we're talking, um. P U D. And. I don't know, we need a lot of work done on some of this. And focus on. So many elements near near the downtown might be most. You talk more about that. But the common thread is that, um, I'm just concerned that we just don't have the in-house staff capacity to do all of the stuff at once. Uh, and so we're gonna need some, you know, we're gonna need some, need some power. On that. And not only from the consultant, but of course from the community as well. As we go through this process. So. That brings me down this uh sort of the option, option two, yeah, let's do, let's do what we can do now. And think about how we. Do this. I've been following very closely what's happened in Evanston. Where they wanted to do a parallel. So many women to redo and a conference plan at the same time. And that sort of got derailed in, in the process. There was just too much to do. And so we were. Still have the conference plan and we'll be, you know, providing. Advising and doing elements of that. Probably over time forever, but we need to kind of pick and choose what we think we can do now. Available resources. So that's sort of where I'm coming. And then if you have any comments, especially about the. More technical code analysis stuff, we appreciate hearing about that too.
So the, back to the building code update, that is a process right now. And we have consultants that's safe. We also detained to do our takeover our. Services, building services. And it's part of that they are eating our building code update process. That is, it works right now. Well, we're going to go from. The twenty fifteen ICC Swedish Coast. Swedish Coast and it's part of that. That's going to come before the little one. Like the late spring, uh early summer. And we, we'll actually have the discussion about store preservation, so we can see. Et cetera. Um right now, one of the building contests. They have the current code, they're basically refining them. Saying it's applicable about our local. Amendments saying, you know, already that's. Flipped by. Eighteen. Old updates. That's where we are right now, but we'll also definitely have those conversations about what additional code we might.
So that work is underway right now.
Yes, yes.
Right, so that. It is being for. P U D stuff.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I expect. Late spring, at least. We're ready to. The updated building. As for the subdivision code. It, it does not need the substantial, right, or the substantial cleanup that they so. I think the biggest problem with the subdivision code is there are. There are several places, not even this. Where it doesn't quite make sense. And there's some footprints and then. It also does not play especially nicely in this. Which should again. Before we. Divide. That's. I'm recommending that, but if we target subdivision code updates, especially to make it. If we have different definitions for the same thing sometimes. Variations. Right, both very strange to. You've got several very long. Subdivision. Um I don't do the side of your part subdivision noticing. It's much more recently. Grandly updated, whereas the zoning code is said that's. Staff. We do not have the staff as a. Um and people, we have the staff asking. The zoning code will be not without an additional. That's something we can talk about. We're just here, we've talked about this for years and. Listen. Um the P U D. It's a cleanup process. It would not be a quick and easy process. Might be a better part of the year. You have that part and the rest of it, I have not.
Okay. Okay. Here's. Uh. Where. Let's go be. Patient. Her wife. She's been. We're going to do. Be. You're going to get low handed through. This is. Best. You're going to post on the analysis system. Where there's an irreputation. From. Your comfort and. Look at it and. Development ordinance. There's a threat. To be less specific, rather versus specific. There be. Straight out if all are made. It's all where they go. It would be. Fair. I think, I think that we're. We're all.
One of the keys, but. Yeah. We're not planning to be. Not in very bright ass persons. Updated language that is more acceptable. Makes the sort of. Man, this is what I'm doing, just to spare.
Yeah. You're eager to rub.
We're going to invite something sort of, or more easily understand.
It's everything. All. We want to. Take. A little closer to. Their change. It would be good to go to the whole code change. Language, but that's a big problem to. What was. Is this a constitution? Changing everything ahead of time.
Sounds sad. Someone to. Yeah. I do this all the time. Our, our goal with all of our clients is to get away from holding each old lawyer. Ball and go. Pieces, we can. If it's comprehensive. But I. Collection is to start getting away from the uh old lawyer on English. That is what we need. Definitely can even.
Good. So. Up to school. And I don't. Don't involve the program. The, the, whatever. There are only the idea if we expand. Too bad. A rebrickable thing here is probably good. But. Work against it is a big project. That's broad, because we have to make sure of changing. The managers, but not our. And. You're a rear. Oh. For complete all of the part of this. Because. We're running this code. But fixing. Sure. Okay, if not, you gather guys that you're lower.
I do.
Okay. Is there any other business for any of. Uh I think you are. Have the motion to go close session. Service. Each year. You can do a closed session. Is there?
Seven.
Second. Roll.
Do you want?
Yes.
As we listen, yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
In caring, so we're in both sessions. We'll be back, return this meeting. And to.